Welcome, everyone. Lawrence is slightly delayed in traffic and should be here soon, but we'll go ahead and start. So, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Litten?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
And Ms. Russell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are we doing the budget questions? Thank you all. I don't see approval of the agenda on here, but we will quickly approve the agenda. I might ask unanimous consent for approval of the agenda. Seeing no objection, so ordered. That takes us to the work session, so let me turn it over to you, Dr. Nenin.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to work session, budget work session number two. We are excited to share with you some information tonight to help answer some questions that you may have with respect to the FY '19 budget. The expectation, I think, tonight is for us to do some presentation around some of the big ideas that came up after the superintendent's presentation of the budget a couple of weeks ago, specifically looking at staff compensation, thinking about IT security, and then we did want to have just a general conversation about professional development. And we also prepared tonight the first round of budget questions and answers to those budget questions, and we'll be reviewing those as well. There are a number of us that are up here to support and help answer. I know Lisa is on her way as well, but I want to take just a second, again, for the last time, I promise, to welcome Kristin Michael. To our team tonight is today is Kristin's first day on the job officially and her first night on the job, so she is here serving in the capacity of COO and trying to answer questions about the budget along with Michelle and Amy Hall, and we are excited to have her here. So, I'm going to invite Amy Hall up just for a second, or not just for a second, for a few minutes, because the first thing we're going to, we'd like to share some information about is staff compensation. Just with respect to flow of this, I think it might be easiest if we have an ability to go through the presentation and then answer questions on the backside of that presentation, just from a flow perspective. I think it'll be easier that way. But let me just sort of start with an overarching statement about this evening. As I think about the budget drivers that we've discussed as part of the superintendent's budget presentation, and thinking about it in the context of the big ideas around human capital, making sure that we are the best IB system that we can be and be the premier in the United States, and then thinking about all meaning all, one of the things that I'm really excited about is to be able to tie all the decision-making that we've been doing to our budget based on those priorities. And so tonight, when we talk about staff compensation, I do want to talk about it from the context of the importance of the human capital that we have in our system. As you know, we have an extraordinary staff here, and compensation is just simply one piece of the puzzle of making sure that we have the best staff possible. So this evening, as Amy is going through her presentation, I also want to put in, plant a seed in your heads, that we're also going to talk about when we talk about professional development, how some of those positions that are also in the budget support the development of people. So it's sort of a twofold process to make sure that we are a highly relevant, highly functional, and strong organization that can recruit people not only from a fiscal perspective but also from a development perspective. So with that, as sort of a backdrop, I'm going to actually turn it over to Kristin, and then Kristin can turn it over to Amy. So if you have anything that you want to say, now is your opportunity. If not, we can just go right to Amy.
I just wanted to thank everyone for hiring me as the Chief Operating Officer for Falls Church City Public Schools. I'm very excited to be here. I have absolutely excellent staff who work for me and for the school system. So the work that they're presenting tonight, they did, and I really applaud them for that effort. So, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to talk some about the salary scales here, then. Scales are, can be, and are typically structured to achieve certain goals. There's a philosophy that a new teacher, in their first few years, you're not necessarily going to get as much out of them as one with more tenure. So the idea of not necessarily committing as much to them on the salary in those first few years. Then on the flip side to that is the idea that you want to invest in a new teacher by hooking them with a good salary and showing some good increases initially, followed then later on by smaller increases. And then incorporated within all of that is the idea that, as a school division, we value education and lifelong learners, and we want to incent our employees to further their education. So what you see in the scale, the percentage increase is going to vary depending on where one is on the scale. At the end of the tenure focus, you're going to see a small variance in the early steps, followed by larger increases between the steps. And then on the retention focus side, you'd see the larger percentage increases early on, followed by some smaller increases. So our next slide here, I've got the Falls Church Fiscal Year 2018 Teacher Salary Schedule. For purposes of this presentation, we're really going to focus on the teacher salaries. We have a significant number, 270 employees, to be exact, who are on the teacher salary schedule. And just for a real quick explanation of the columns you see there, BA would be for someone with a bachelor's degree. BA plus 18, bachelor's degree plus 18 additional credit hours towards an advanced degree. The MA lane is master's degree. MA plus 30 would be master's plus 30 additional credits, either towards a higher degree or perhaps another master's degree. And then the PhD column. So the teacher step increases within this scale range from 0% to around 5%. And as you see, in the first three years in each of those lanes, the step increase would be 0%. And that's, so a teacher in those lanes, assuming they start at step one, if they were only to receive step increases, would not see an actual increase until the fourth year. Then right around the 10th year, generally is about the max there, and that's where they'd see around a 4.8% increase with a step. And then in the final steps in the lanes, it's overall around less than a 0.5% increase between those steps. And this is essentially just a visual of that chart there. So in that, those colored bars at the very end there, you see a flat line, then with the increase as the percentage increases between the steps go up. On the top three, then, you see a little bit more of a flattening and a little increase and kind of a little staggered steps there. And then this next chart is where our 270 employees on that teacher salary scale fall. So, give you an explanation of this. Over on the colored lines on the side there, you see the BA. There's 22 employees on that, BA 18, 31, and so on. So that's the breakdown of the individual lanes. And then as you see along the bottom, there are the steps. So the steps, there's, for the masters, MA 30 and PhD, there's 29 steps. The others don't have as many steps. And then the vertical line there are the number of employees. So if you look at an example, so the green is the MA. For step nine on the MA, we have 19 employees at that step. If you look then, so step 11 on the MA scale, we have 15 employees. So what this shows you again is where everyone falls. It also shows that we are pretty well-spread out where people are, and there's not a, you know, the, those first three steps on all of those levels, I think the total is only about 28 employees who fall in those categories. Any questions on this one? It's a lot of details there. Okay, so when we're talking salary scale adjustment versus a step increase, salary scale adjustment, which you also see referred to as a COLA, that effectively, it raises the salaries for all steps, so every employee will receive an increase in that scenario, and then effectively increases employees' career earnings as well. A step increase, then, is really intended to reflect experience and reward staff for an additional year of service. That increase that the employee will receive is going to vary where they are on the scale. So at step nine, the percentage increase that they're going to receive is higher than the increase that an employee on step five received. And then staff at the top and the bottom of the scale either don't receive a salary increase or receive a very minimal salary increase between the steps. And so what I've got here on the next few slides, I've given some examples. This is going to be if we had only COLAs for over a five-year period, and assuming that percentage increase over each of those years was 3%. So I took a couple of levels, the BA 18, starting at step eight, and then you see the salary, the actual salary number, and that overall increase over five years would be around 12.5%. Same percentage, but obviously different salary for the MA, starting at step one, and the MA 30, starting at step 10. But consistently with all of them, across the five years, it would be a 12.5% increase. Then the next example is if we only gave step increases over that five-year period. So those same levels, the, for the BA 18, starting at step eight, the overall percentage would be around 16.5. The MA, starting at step one, as you see, again, those first three years, they would receive no increase, so over five years, the total increase would be around 10.3%. And then the MA 30 at step 10, total increase would be 21%. And then the last example would be a combination, if we alternated a 3% COLA with a step increase. So, again, the BA 18, yeah, the 16.6%, the MA, step one, is again going to be the lowest at 6.1%, and the MA 30 would be at 16.5%. And then overall, salary scale adjustment versus a step, who benefits? As a rule, the existing employees in the middle of the scales are going to see the greatest increase. In general, there's largely yearly an overtime percentage increases there. The employees at the bottom and the top benefit more from scale adjustments. There's no increase, again, no percentage increase in the first three steps, and they drop significantly at the higher steps. And then as market competitiveness really favors the scale adjustments, again, those higher salaries are going to be more attractive to applicants.
So at this time, we'd like to sort of offer up an opportunity to ask questions of a lot of information that's been shared with you. I think the overall philosophy that I've tried to take along with our team with respect to the 3% COLA this year is to really kind of whittle away even further on the competitive side of the salary scale with surrounding jurisdictions. As I looked at these data, one of the things that was evident to me is it really sort of breaks down into thirds. You have the bottom third, the middle third, and the top third of the salary scales. And when we look at the data across the entire scale, with that 3% COLA, it seemed to favor 2/3 of the employees more than 1/3, as we looked at the overarching number of folks that are there. I would, as I mentioned before, be interested in looking at a process where we got into a step and then a COLA and a step and a COLA to kind of keep things moving and keep the salary scales rising, but also taking into account the idea of the tenure piece that Ms. Hall had mentioned. But we would welcome any questions you have with respect to COLA versus step or anything that has to do with our salary scales, because it is something that we need to, we feel like we need to dive into also, to make sure that we remain competitive.
Thank you, sir. So, questions? Greg?
So I need to begin by reading my statement of disclosure. I think we're going to be using this. I have consulted with the school board attorney and am making the following disclosure of interest pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3112B1. Pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3115H, I have a personal interest in the school board budget in that my spouse is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and I am therefore a member of a group of three or more persons affected by budget decisions. I am able to participate in our discussion fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So, while Mr. Webb, the chair, gets ready, other questions? Let's go.
Do the lower increases at the MA's step disincentivize people from going to get the masters? If they can, you know, if they know they're going to get higher increases by staying at a BA 18, would they, would do that? I just wonder if that disincentivizes them from taking on that extra debt of a masters? Kind of the extra experience.
So I know, I came from Fairfax County Public Schools. We just went through a pretty lengthy compensation study, and one of the things that you really find is teachers who move to that master's degree lane make additional funding every single year because that starting pay is higher. And when you look at that cumulative impact over the course of a teacher's career, it's really in their best interest to move to that higher education level as early in their career as they possibly can in order to maximize their career earnings. So I think looking at that and seeing that increase really does kind of motivate teachers to take that extra step and to continue to get their education.
With our tuition waivers, that's also incentive for them to go toward masters because they, some of it's paid for through UBA or Virginia Tech.
The other additional piece to that is the BA 18 max is out at year 17. So if you stay for 18 years, you don't make any increase after that. So you would move on to the MA scale and you'd be good for 29 years. Which I was reminded, by the way, today, if we do a step every other year, to get to the end of the scale, you'd have to work for 58 years. So that does have some influence and impact about what our scales look like, and really forces us to maybe take a deeper dive, not this year, but into the future, about how we might want to collapse the scale to be more comprehensive in terms of the needs of our community.
So I have, unless there's other questions, I have several questions, Dr. Nenin. It sort of, it starts with the general observation that I think giving COLAs helps keeps the salary scale competitive and sort of emphasizes the ability to hire, whereas giving steps sort of works better on the retention front, because if you don't give steps, then there's an incentive for people to leave if, you know, they're a step five here, they can go to Arlington, and they're a step eight, because we haven't given steps each year. So I have a couple of questions. One, I know we don't have the money to do both this year. It's just, at least we don't have the money to do a 3% COLA and a step at the same time. Have we done any sort of examination yet so we could see what our degree of, if you will, step seniority is? In other words, we would know from over time when we've given steps and when we haven't, you know, what's the average level of experience? Like, I would assume, you know, for a, you know, for a MA 18 teacher with eight years of experience, they're like, on average, at a step five. And I would, I'm kind of curious, one, whether we have done any comparison to other jurisdictions about that. Second, if we, if we do do something like not give a step every year and alternate, there's a potential for a lack of equity among the staff, because a newly hired teacher who came in laterally might be a step eight when her colleague is a step five for the same level of experience. And that can be a little corrosive, it seems to me, for morale. So I get the need to do a COLA, in particular to keep the salary scales competitive, but I'm concerned about the effects long-term on retention and staff morale if there's not a process for equity among teachers and to compare, to make sure we actually are competitive with other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I think your concern is well-raised. One of the things that we were looking at, just to sort of respond to the first question, I think more than anything, is what has the history been in the city of Falls Church with respect to giving steps? And is that sort of argument of, I'm a step five here, but I could transfer over to Arlington to be a step eight, one that we really need to be considerate of? And I asked Ms. Hi to go back, and we're pretty confident, we can, we'll verify this, that in the last decade, you haven't given a step for two years. So for two of those years, there was not the step given, which then means that there is that capacity where somebody could be a five here and would be a seven somewhere else, but it's not as exaggerated as I think maybe some of the stories that have been out there might indicate. With respect to the second part of that question, of the deeper analysis of looking at, you know, what does it look like for a master's 18, we haven't really done that analysis. We've got a good starting point with what I think Amy has put together with respect to where people are and really knowing where our folks are. So that's something we could potentially take another look at to determine whether there is some issue there. And then the last piece about the parity, again, I think that it's a good concern to We bring people in from other jurisdictions all the time who have potentially equivalent years of experience but are on different steps. And typically, when we bring people in, we don't ask what step you're on, we ask how many years of experience do you have? So if somebody's in our system, and I see where that disconnect can happen, so I guess I'm seeing what you're saying about being a five. If you've got somebody here who didn't step, who's on five, who's coming in as a seven, I think that those things do happen.
So like, I've never been a teacher, but I was a federal government employee for a long time, including on the GS scale, right? So the, you know, it's pretty well-known for, at least lawyers going into the federal government, that you don't want to go directly as an honors program person. You want to go out and work a year or two, because you come in several steps higher. So, you know, like, somebody who works for a year or two could come in as a 13/6 as opposed to just being a 12, step 12 will be, step 12, yeah, I'm sorry, grade 12. And that, you know, that persists the whole way through, because when you, when you are a, you know, like, say a 13 and a whole bunch of steps, you actually come in, and when you get promoted to a 14, you go to like a 14/3, because they don't give you a pay cut. And so that lasts for a long time. Yeah, I think we, we, at least it seems to me, I don't know how other people feel, that, you know, we've got to do what we can do in terms of what's fairness for, fair for the staff right now, but I'd very much like to think long-term about what's a fair compensation program for people, because I think that disequities, or inequities, I should say, excuse me, can come in over time, and sometimes the scales don't automatically remedy that. And I don't know if that's things like quality step increases or other mechanisms, but there ought to be some way or some mechanism to make sure that, you know, if you're, if you've got two teachers with an equivalent level of experience and they're just as good teachers, that one's not making 10 grand more than the other.
Correct, and this is something that I know regionally the other school systems have tackled. When you look at the Washington area Boards of Education Guide that compares salaries across the jurisdictions as well as other information, that WABE guide, the format for reporting salaries was actually adjusted a couple of years ago to, instead of saying step 10, right, the middle range when they look at a WABE salaries, is now a master's degree with the teacher beginning their 10th year of teaching, to try to look at, even though we know since 2009, districts at various times have done steps or not done steps. Sometimes people didn't give steps and their teachers remained on the same steps. Sometimes I know districts like Fairfax County added a sub-zero step, like, so we added a fake step at the bottom and everyone stepped with no money. So in that comparison for that WABE guide, they really tried to look at, so how would we treat someone with a master's degree and 10 years of experience? So I think it's really important that we maintain that comparison as we're looking at data, because we really want to be comparing apples to apples. It's also important that we communicate that to employees, right, so they see that information and it's accurate as well. So I think these are all really good points as we look at moving forward, you know, how we message this, how we communicate it, and how we are doing some valid comparisons.
Well, as an honors program attorney at DOJ, you don't always do it for the money. But with respect to the masters candidates, masters holders, what is the, do we have a good sense of the incremental value that a master's degree adds? I've read varying positions in the literature about graduate degrees and teachers.
I don't, I don't know that we have any information that quantifies it the way that perhaps you're looking for it, but what we do know is that that's actually an interesting conversation that's happening around the state with the issue around teacher shortage, for example, and potentially changing the method by which you can become a teacher in the Commonwealth. Because currently, the process is you have to get a bachelor's, and then you have to get a degree on top of that to be able to teach in a particular content area. So I think the value add within the content is really important, to the extent that you're, as a really high-quality teacher, you can't teach content to kids and be able to differentiate to meet the needs of a variety of kids unless you know that content really well. And that, to me, just as a sort of editorial comment on the side, is something that I'm concerned about with respect to just hiring BAs out of college, because they may not have the depth of understanding around their particular content like some of our teachers are. So I don't know if there's a research study out there, but from a practitioner's perspective and my observational data, I would say that there is a value to having a master's degree in the content, because you can really meet the needs of a lot of kids very differently than you might not otherwise if you don't have that depth and complexity in that particular content area.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Nenin. And with respect to the step issue that Mr. Reitinger raised, my understanding is we in this division do not do sort of hiring bonus steps, that if you're coming in with X years of experience, you end up on this scale, and we don't provide added steps as an incentive. Does that mitigate any concern that Mr. Reitinger had about inequalities there?
There is some flexibility that's given to the superintendent during a hiring process that allows for some, up to two, I believe, additional steps that can help with some of that. It can also, you know, work in the opposite direction. So we really do try to hold to the steps that people are coming in on, and we also cap those steps at 15. So if we have a teacher who's coming in with 20 years of experience, we don't ever give them more than 15 years of experience.
And then last question, what are, any idea what our neighbors are doing this year or thinking about doing?
I have, I'm supposed to have a meeting tomorrow with my neighbor colleagues in Faukeer County, and if they're open or delayed, we will have that meeting, and I'll have a better understanding tomorrow. I do know that, well, I'll let you talk about Fairfax, but I'll say about Arlington, it's my understanding that they're going to do a step only, and there won't be any COLA attached to that.
And Fairfax County Public Schools, the superintendent proposed providing employees with a step and also investing an additional $53 million in the teacher salary scale. Fairfax County salaries, particularly at mid-careers, have been really quite far below the market average, so they're really trying to invest funding just to get their salaries to that market average level.
So sort of the same process that you all have gone through over the last couple of years to bring the salary scales up to be competitive regionally. Any other questions?
So just in conclusion, I, I would be, for next year, be very interested in, I know there were some things done before, but, you know, I think we can assume that we're going to be resource-constrained for five years or so until, well, maybe longer than that, through about 2026. And we may be resource-constrained forever, but I mean, it's going to be a very tight set of budgets until MEH comes off the debt books of the city. So what's the best way to allocate, you know, let's say it's, you know, 2% a year or 3% a year, I mean, if we just pick something, what's the best way to allocate that over time so that we have equity and maintain both, you know, retain staff and keep high staff morale while still being competitive to hire? And I don't have the answer. I would just say that seems to me to be a worthy topic for the superintendent and a staff committee or however you want to approach it. Would be a worthwhile thing to look at, because I think that would be, that'd be something we'd all be interested in.
Yeah, I think it is a good topic for us to consider, and I'd like to consider it in the context of overall compensation, as opposed to just a percentage of, whether it's step or COLA or looking at other employee benefits as well. And I do know that that's And I do know that that's a conversation that we've already had, trying to figure out how do we proceed from here. We recognize that we're resource-constrained over a period of time, whatever it'll be, and we really felt like this three-percent COLA was the best of all possibilities for us to move forward with this year. So, thanks. Our next area.
Thank you.
All right, our next topic, do you want us to go ahead and move to that one?
Yes.
All right, our next topic is around IT web security. There is a budget item in there regarding web security. And all of the handouts that you're getting tonight for the good of the community will be posted on the budget work page tomorrow, so you'll have access to all of these. We're projecting them as well, so you'll have a chance to see what's going up. So I've invited Dang Nguyen to join us tonight, who's put together a couple of slides. And Dang, I'll turn it over to you.
Tonight, I'm going to just present the new Baracuda Web Security Service. It's a new cloud-based web content filtering that will replace the existing web content filter that we've been hosting in-house. So first of all, I would like to go over the current web filtering that we've been using right now. We have the, we've been hosting the web filter appliance nine-ten, and in 2014, we paid thirty-five thousand for this box to place in our data center at GM. Every year, we have to pay for premium support and NHI update around seventeen thousand. And this box, every single traffic to go to the internet have to go through this box. And it's really expensive to maintain and support, and it's really hard for us because every single device have to go through this box to be enabled to go to the internet. And we've been adding a lot of devices in the last few years. The new cloud-based web security from Baracuda that is will sit in between the internet and our data center, and it will filter out the bad stuff such as virus and spyware and malware. And then it filter out the best stuff before it hit, I mean, before we, it filter out the best stuff and then, and it protect us before on the device go to the internet. So on the, on the stuff that go through to the internet, it have to go through their cloud base to go to the internet. And it's also based on the policies that we, we try to migrate the current policy of the owner-user to the web base so we can accept the console everywhere on the internet and manage owner-user for the whole district. And some of the key features here that this web-based content security provide is inspect on the port and on protocol and make sure no data compromised. And it have a cloud intelligence, and if a new threat was detected, it's automatically updated across the, on the site. And it have a real-time threat correlation, which is dynamically compute the risk of every page object using the content domain analysis. It's also have the industry threat fee that only partner in the business that sharing the new security threat within this cloud. Some key benefit that this Baracuda Web Security Service provide is the best-in-class feature and highly scalable infrastructure. It's comprehensive web security for user across own device and location, which is only users will be controlled anytime, even the applied student, even apply the web security, I mean, still enabled for only applied users. And it's protect on the web traffic, block on the virus and malware and on the cyber attack, and in real-time constant inline blocking. It stop data infiltration and bottleneck communication, and it's fully SSL inspection, and it's near-year old latency, which is there no, there unlimited data rate that between the data center and the cloud.
So this sort of responds in some ways to a couple of conversations that have come up. The first, with respect to superintendents that may not be paying attention to whether or not they're concerned about an attack, which we always are, making sure that our computers are safe and our kids are safe and our data systems are safe. And the other is to try to sort of move away from server and move information to the cloud. And so this is an opportunity for us to do some web security service through a cloud-based solution as opposed to a server solution. So at this point, Dang's here for questions. This is way out of my league, and I'm going to turn it over to he and to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dang.
Are there questions? Mr. Castillo.
So it looks like we're doing more than just going from the box to the same service on the cloud, but it's essentially, it's Zscaler, I'm not quite sure what Zscaler's doing here versus what Baracuda's doing.
What happened is Zscaler is the same service that GScalor provided. So Baracuda took the GScalor service and rebranded. So I have reached out to GScalor, and actually, GScalor responded back to me and say, you go ahead and contact Baracuda because they use the same software that we provide, and they just rebranded, which is cheaper than the same service that we, GScalor provided. So they, that's why they say, provide by GScalor, because they rebranded, yeah. The back name.
But it's basically the same service?
Same, yes.
So it'll be, there'll be less in the way of transition issues because you're familiar with this, right?
Yes, yes. So we're going to have a same console and same management console that we're using right now to control, I mean, the user, but it's the same service, but which is outsourced to the cloud. Yes.
And have you tested this? I've had some experience with some Zscaler compatibility issues.
GScalor, in two years ago, I have, and we tried to integrate it inside a school system. We have a demo test between user, but at that time, they could not authenticate across the domain. So it's every single email address, that how they authenticate. So if we go to that route, every single email, I mean, authenticated, it have to be like either email address or the ID group here. But it's very nice, the console, two years ago, yeah, I have tested with GScalor.
All right, great, thanks.
Other questions?
Just a couple.
We've been waiting for this.
It's like a show.
As I said, too.
The ask was for, what, sixty-eight thousand?
Sixty-eight thousand, yes.
So is that capital or is that, I'm just trying to figure out if you?
It's a three-year budget, sixty-eight thousand for thirty-one hundred users. That's like twenty-two something dollars per user. So they go by email address, by like single account, by the student.
So is that the three-year amount or the one-year amount?
One-year amount.
So the, it's, is it sixty-eight thousand dollars gross or net?
That's the net cost. So what they did is they took the funding, I believe, based on the information I have, they took the funding that we're currently spending and the new resources that would be required to move to the solution would be the sixty-eight thousand dollars.
So the total cost is sixty-eight plus seventeen?
No, sixty-eight, seventeen thousand was offset the sixty-eight because seventeen thousand was the own appliance need to be, I mean, support and stuff. So it's like fifty-one thousand for every year because we've been paying seventy thousand for the renewal, update every year for the own box.
So if that's the case, then the ask is for fifty-one, right, not sixty-eight?
Yes, that's about right. That's about right, yes.
So we ought to adjust that. I mean, though we electricity savings too, but that's not either here or there. But, and it's a cloud-based web proxy effectively?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I have other questions, but they're not budget-related, so I'm going to just stop with that.
Can we connect you guys?
I'm happy to, sure.
Okay. So maybe you and Mr. Riding can get together?
Sure, sure, sure.
Other questions?
If not, thank you, Dang.
I guess I'll just say, I have other questions as well, but they're also not budget-related. So I sort of want to defer, but not quite, to my esteemed colleague across the table, but I can be happy to answer, maybe I should ask questions.
I'm just going to say just.
If you'll send them to me, or if it makes more sense for the two of you to get together with Dang, and then we can memorialize that conversation somehow so that we can put it up, that's also a possibility.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks, Dang. All right. Next, overview of professional development.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something that came up at the presentation that I wanted to spend just a little bit of time talking about this evening because it really speaks to, I think, in many ways, sort of that commitment to human capital from a different perspective as opposed to just being a well-paid employee in the system. We're also committed to your own learning and your own development. And one of the ways that I want to knit this together with respect to the budget conversation is to discuss a couple of the new resource requests that were part of the budget. Specifically, thinking about the new, the addition of the school resource teacher position for special education. And I want to talk about that just in terms of providing professional learning and professional development to our existing staff here in the system. We currently have Summer Manos, who works in Lisa's shop of academics, who's been responsible for things like RTI and the support process, working specifically with all teachers, but in many ways with sort of a focus on what does good first-tier quality instruction look like? So typically, general ed teachers. And as a consequence of that, it's not to suggest that Summer isn't getting to everyone, but we think that there's an opportunity to sort of double down on our efforts here a little bit around all meaning all and bring in that additional resource teacher in special ed that would complement the work that Summer is doing and serve as a partner to her to do very similar things, but also with specifically special ed teachers and also general ed teachers, to talk about best practices in curriculum instruction, to be able to talk about, you know, how do we meet the needs of all kids, what are good intervention strategies, to also to model lessons for teachers and to work with collaborative teams on the development of curriculum for special needs students. That is, those would be sort of two sides of a triangle, if you will. And then the third side of the triangle is a budget-neutral request that we're working on, which is the additional ESOL position, not additional ESOL position, but a repurposing of the ESOL position where we would take one of our existing positions and create a leap specialist resource teacher, if you will, that would do the same thing that Summer's doing and the same thing that the special ed person is doing, but doing it in English speakers of other languages or ESOL. So they would model lessons, they would help develop curriculum, they would work closely with the teachers, but with a real slant towards ESOL. And that person would also then have some responsibility, some outward-facing responsibility to create some synergy with the community as well, to make sure that our community of folks who are, who have ESOL students feel invited and welcome in our system and the like. So ultimately, that would be three sides of a triangle that would all really support high-quality embedded professional development in our school site. And when I mention embedded, I think that that's important because there are really two ways that we look at professional development. One is external and the other is internal. And there's no jury out on it at all. The research suggests that anytime we can do embedded, in-time professional development and professional learning with our faculty and staff, the better opportunity we have to impact student outcomes. So while we do send some folks off to conferences, what the research suggests is we're going to get a bigger bang for our buck if we're working on that professional learning in our own system. So the three, those three positions together can really create, I think, a foundational aspect to professional learning. There are two other positions that are in the budget that support this notion of the development of our human capital and our teachers. And the other one is a ratio position or one that comes right out of, right out of our staffing allocations, and that is the math resource teacher at Henderson Middle School. And the importance of having that person really working on mathematics instruction, talking about what does it look like with the new standards of learning that have come out, what does it look like for resources, that person can really interface closely with the math teacher specifically at Henderson. And then the additional point-five PYP coordinator at the two elementary schools. That person that would be split between the two buildings would also work with our staff on curriculum development around IB and really work with assessment and evaluation of students in IB as well. So the complement, if you will, of those five people really focused, and their energy focused on the development of our people in the system, I think really allows us to provide some significant leverage with respect to professional learning so that we can really dig into this notion of we are a learning community and we are a team of people who believe that when we're learning together, our students are learning right along with us. And if our learning stagnates, our students stagnate as well. So with that, as again, sort of a context in terms of the budget with those five positions, Lisa has a few slides that she wants to share that sort of talks about what do we currently do in professional development, both internally and externally, and how that ties to our training plan.
All right, so again, as Dr. Nunez shared, we have conferences and training, and that's the external. And then we have in-house training where we're bringing people into our division to work with all of our staffs on different training. And job embedded is when we have staff during their planning blocks, during early release time and other professional days. And then we also have a little bit of online training that we do. And so it ties to all of our priorities. When you look at student-centered teaching and learning for the IB programs, we're making sure that, you know, we offer professional development, particularly all staff have to be trained in category one training. And that's usually where either they go somewhere to be trained or if we have, you know, enough staff in a year. And a lot of times, we'll do it over a two-year period. If we have thirty staff members, no more than thirty, will they allow in one session? We'll bring a person in, and that seems to be a little bit more cost-effective for us to bring trainers in to do that. We do send our staff to Mid-Atlantic IB conferences, the IB Global conferences, as well as we have training days for our IB coordinators. They go to training with our regionally. In-house PD trainings, we, this year, and all of this is for FY18, the year that we're currently in that we're talking about. We have a trainer who's coming three days this year for NYPD and DP assessment training. And then we've also brought someone in for math inquiry. And the estimated budget is right around seventy-nine thousand, well over seventy-nine thousand. Another empower our principals as collaborative instructional leaders, really focusing on having them become parts of the collaborative team. Again, that's the job embedded, where we learn from each other. And so we want our principals and administrators to be able to lead in that particular process. And again, they have gone to training. As far as job embedded, they had two days of training in August. And then we've had four leadership trainings that Dr. Nunez and I have done with the principals this year, as well as this monthly administrator meetings. this year, as well as this monthly administrator meetings. And that is right around budgeted at twenty-five hundred dollars. Moving on to really our special populations, um, we, this year, we have Excel, which is Expediting Comprehension for English Language Learners. We, first of all, worked with the VDOE to get a grant for seventy-seven hundred dollars to help offset some of that cost. So we do, whenever we can, we look for grants to also help us train our teachers. And then there was about four thousand dollars left to have that Excel training. And we had thirty-five of our staff K-12 be trained in Excel. And it's, the Excel allows teachers to be able to go back and use best practices. It's focused on our English language learners, but it's really best practices that you can use for any, um, any staff, any students. We have WIDA, VESA, those are both related to English language learners. Orton-Gillingham Training is a special ed method. We've had trauma-informed care come in. That was our special education and our special services staff. And then we're also sending some of our reading specialists to the Virginia State Reading Association Conference later this spring. Again, we bring in an external coach, four days during the school year. He will be here the end of January, and then he'll be here again this spring. And he's looking at what we're doing in terms of all of our MTSS, RTI, and our behavioral Looking at technology, the Education, Falls Church Education Foundation does so much for us. And this year, they've really focused on the, um, the technology as well as other things, but they've do, done Google Summit and School Ag sent staff members to that. So we are still focusing on technology to some extent. Priority two, excellent staff, provide ongoing quality professional learning to ensure best practices are implemented in our classrooms. And this is really where we're learning from each other. Teachers who have gone to some of the external conferences, we've asked that they come back and on either early release Wednesday or on a professional development day, they do trainings to share what they've learned when they've been at conferences with their colleagues just to build capacity in each other. We have really focused on building collaborative team planning. At least, you know, a couple of times during the week, they're planning together as a team, working with our IB NYPD coordinators to, to do that. As far as our new teachers who are coming in brand-new, we have a professional mentoring program where we have someone who has, you know, taught in other places, but comes and works with our staff here. And we, we have worked, we've changed it this, the past two years to have this be the model. Before, we were doing mentors within the building, but what we found is the person who worked next door, who was your mentor, really couldn't come in and on a regular basis, you know, give you feedback on classroom management or an instructional practice. So this allows this individual to come in and it's, you know, it's someone that's safe. You can, you know, talk about, you know, challenges that you may, may be having, and it's, it's, it's safe for them to be able to share that with an individual. We also have training in August for our new teachers, as well as workshop Wednesdays that they attend as well. Let's see. We're looking at creating a professional learning plan and calendar. And in, this, this month in January, we will be pulling our steering committee together to begin that process, to look at what we want our professional development, what expectations we will have. We'll, we'll have discussions around job embedded versus going to conferences and what's best for us. And, and again, continue to focus on our priorities from the triennial plan, which have been, you know, IB, special populations, and mathematics. This year has been one of the other areas that we focused on. You know, with Dr. Noonan talked about the math specialist at MEH being, that person will help us as the new standards have been revised and are being, this year, where they're kind of being crosswalked. Next year will be the first year that it will be full implementation, and there will be testing onto those new standards. And then safe learning environments, providing maintained safe and secure facilities. We have mandatory training at the beginning of the year where our school board attorney goes in and does training, as well as we have an online for all of our staff on some of the compliance training, like child abuse, bloodborne pathogens, et cetera, as well as we have now rolled out our employee handbook for everyone to be able to actually go through it, read it, ask questions, and, and check off that they've read it. And we're doing that as a yearly responsibility now. And I think that's it.
So one of the things that I am particularly excited about is this idea, if you go back one slide, is this idea of developing a, a three-to-five-year professional development plan. There isn't currently one in place. And so I, I think in absence of having a really good roadmap about how we get better, we, we don't have an opportunity to do it at the rate or the speed to which we, we wish to do that. So I'm excited about engaging multiple stakeholders across the division around this development process. As Ms. High indicated, we do have a steering committee that's coming together this month, but we hope to start the work in, in the spring with some big goals that sort of talk about what does it look like for the next three to five years? And it goes beyond just the teaching ranks. One of the things that I think we also need to pay attention to is the operational side of the house. What is the training that our bus drivers are getting? What's the training that our food service folks are getting? What's the training that, you know, our facilities folks are getting? Is it appropriate and is it helping them learn as well? Because as an organization, we need to remain healthy through, through that learning. So this plan will be quite comprehensive, I think, when it's done, but it's one I think we'll be able to hang our hats on, be able to tie it to not only our strategic plan, but help teachers become certified or, or do their renewals through the process as well, and also be able to support teachers who are struggling with some other options that may or may not be available currently. And, and those positions that we're talking about with respect to the budget here as part of this work session will be a critical step in helping develop that plan. So with that, we will take any questions that you might have about professional development.
All right.
Thank you both very much. Questions? Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair. A lot of this looks really interesting, and I think making, making it an internal, capitalizing on our internal resources makes a lot of sense, and I think it'd create a great culture. Does that have any impact on the calendar and how and when we schedule training?
It's a really great question. That is the second big committee that we plan to put together, probably not until late spring or even the summer. And our focus, one of the areas of focus that I'd like to spend some time on is this notion of time. I think what we've discovered in our conversations or in the, the sort of listening session that I've had is that there are, you know, it's a finite amount of time that happens from the day after Labor Day to June fifteenth. There's a finite amount of time from eight o'clock in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon. And how do we cut that time up to meet the variety of needs that we have? Whether it's professional development, whether it's time for collaboration for our teachers, whether it's time for recess for our kids, whether it's time for a winter vacation for our families, whether it's, you know, all of those things in combination really raise this question about how do we utilize time effectively? And so your, your question is well raised and one that we would really like to take a deep dive into because we know that professional learning is going to have an impact on the time. But I, I want to go back to something that I, I said last session and maybe didn't articulate as, as well as I perhaps could have. But that is that this idea of working collaboratively is something that's really important to me. And right now, our teachers do have some time built into their schedules to, to work together. So if I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson, for me to go off to a conference and learn how to teach fourth-grade content actually doesn't make any sense. I should be talking to other fourth-grade teachers about the content that we're teaching collectively and collaboratively because I'm going to learn more from that team meeting than I will from going off and, and talking or listening to a conference. So one of the things that, as part of this conversation around time is going to revolve around is, is there time for teachers to do that collaboration? Because that's the most, in my opinion, one of the most important periods of time for professional learning that there is in our system. So that, that sort of gets to some of the question around some of this internal professional development as well.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I guess, I just had a couple of questions. The mentoring program, I, I really like the idea that you're tying folks together with an external resource for the reasons that you talked about. I'm curious, is this something that all new staff is encouraged to participate in as they come in? How do they know about it, that sort of thing?
During the August training, when we have the four days of training, one of the days they spend with this individual, we have someone who focuses on our regular education. And we also have someone who is a specialist for special education, who also works with some of our teachers. And it is where, at the beginning of the year, those individuals come in to help them get set up. And then throughout the year, they meet with them at least two to three times. And for teachers who have us, are more of a need and need some more support than Ms. Casey and I meet, and we talk about how we can support that individual better. So it's really on a case-by-case, but everyone meets with her who's new to Falls Church. They may even have been teaching for several years, but if they're new to FCCPS, then she works with them and comes into their classroom. As well as we also have through our, um, Falls Church Educational Association, they've also tied teachers who work in the building with people as well, so they get two different types of support for our new staff.
And then more generally, how, and this is sort of tied to equity of overall compensation and overall package there, how do, how are staff informed of opportunities for development that may be external or may require a resource or time? How does that done, generally speaking?
For our IB conferences is usually our PYP, NYPD, or DP coordinator who pays close attention as to what conferences are available. We also have them work with the principals to say, what are the needs right now? What are our focus areas? For example, assessment at the middle and high school. So we've brought someone in to do that with our staff. So it's really a combination of our, for IB, the coordinators, as well as the administrators. In terms of like mathematics and RTI and MTSS, they work with me and the specialist, like a Summer Manos, to find things. And then there are teachers who will find something that they're really interested in, and they'll propose it to the principals, and, you know, they will consider whether that's something that we feel they should attend. But we've really focused on bringing more people into us so that it, we can, you know, get a larger training for more people, and we can all hear the same message, as well as really working with each other. That's been really important this year. And especially, most of our early release Wednesdays have entailed us working together as a team.
Other questions?
Can I ask?
Blaine?
I just have a question about sort of the idea of principals as instructional leaders. I'm just curious whether you think they feel they have the time, given kind of the administrative duties, to really serve as an instructional leader?
That's, that's really what we want them to do. I mean, it's, it's all about instruction. You know, we would prefer them, you know, for our principals to, if they're managerial type things, you know, ask their assistant principals, ask, you know, other staff to, to help with some of those things because instruction is, is what we're about as a school division. So they need to, to know what are, you know, the strengths of our teachers and to be able to support them if there are some areas that they're not strength. So, you know, we, you know, Dr. Noonan and I have worked to try to build their capacity and, you know, just leadership and in general. But that's, that's what we want, want them to be.
I want to add on to that. I think in many cases, it's about a commitment that you make. Having been a high school principal myself and a middle school principal in two different buildings, you know, I would put it on my schedule that I was going to be in classrooms working with teachers during a, a certain period of time, and I really let very little get in the way of that unless it was an emergent situation. We have really great kids in our buildings, and the, the number of emergent situations that we have is pretty minimal. So if our principals are really making a commitment to get into classrooms and working with teachers, it's, if, if it can happen anywhere, it can happen here, for sure.
Other questions?
Just, Blaine, it's just within the, are most teachers fairly receptive to the, the in-house type of professional development?
I, I think so, more than before, I believe. And, and we are asking, what is it that you need? So we're, you know, we're soliciting input from our staff to say, what is, what are the areas that you would like to see P, have PD present it to you? So I think we're, we're working in collaboration. And so I think, yes, they're, they're receptive.
And I asked that question, I was at a, a board meeting over the weekend, and the same conversation came up about professional development and being able to more bring in the type of development, more widespread usage of it versus sending individuals off to conferences and how just generally more effective that is. So was just wondering what the thought was here.
Any other final questions before we move on to the next topic? Thank you very much.
All right, next, we are going to be discussing school budget visits. And before I turn it over to Dr. Noonan, I just want to give a little background on that. Over the years that, with my years on the board, and I'm assuming prior with Mr. Castillo, with your time being on, we've all, there's always been the concept of these two members going into buildings to have, give staff an opportunity to, to talk to us essentially kind of unfiltered without administrators in the room with them so we can kind of get a more general idea of what their thoughts and things are within that. And I asked that question last week, and just because I didn't see that, but I wanted to at least have a conversation to see if the board still sees value in that and potentially reach out and work with staff to see how that goes. But with that kind of setup, I'll turn it over to, to Dr. Noonan and see where...
I, I guess, um, I, thank you. I guess I'd like to sort of hear from the board about your, your thoughts on that. My, my experiences that I've had that are sort of aligned to this idea have been more of a visit to, we, we've had board members attend PTA meetings with the superintendent to hear what the parent community is talking about. And staff can obviously be there for that PTA meeting. I, I would offer this as an, as an alternative would be to, and, and part of it is, and I'm going to back up here a little bit, and I don't mean to throw you a curveball. One of the things I'm really trying to establish, I think, here in the city of Falls Church with the staff is a, is a really strong, a strong relationship between the superintendent and the staff. I'm in buildings, I'm talking with teachers, we have really good conversations, and, and we have a good peak relationship, I think, as well. And the one thing I would, I wouldn't want to have happen would be that there's some opportunity, if you will, for the staff to talk to the board about things that they were worried about talking to me about. It just seems a little antithetical to me around building that good relationship. So I, I would offer as an alternative that perhaps the two board members that go, if I could join and be part of the conversation, unless you all felt like that was going to somehow inhibit the conversation. But I, my experience with the teachers I've spoken to is that there's not a lot of inhibition about saying what's on their mind. So I, I think the school visits would be great. My only alternative, my only add-alternative to that would be, I would love to be part of that conversation as opposed to outside of that conversation, just to sort of show a united front, that we are, we're together, the staff and the superintendent and the school board.
So with that, I will open the floor to hear feedback.
You're shy grouped?
I know. Yes, Mr. Redinger?
I'll always talk. Just briefly, I, I don't, I don't think that concerns me. You know, I think my experience in the past was that it was always helpful to get unfiltered flow, but I think you're right that there's a, I think you'll get a lot of that anyway. I, I can't guarantee that after doing it for one year that I wouldn't want to go back to the old way before. But at least from my personal view is, I'm happy to try it your way because I've never done it that way. You know, I've only been on the board for two years, and so we did it the same way both times. And to be frank, I think, I think a lot of it will depend on the way you present yourself in those meetings. And I actually don't have a whole lot of concern that teachers will be intimidated because I experienced how you present yourself to, to teachers, and it feels to me like you'll be open and accepting and taking feedback. be open and accepting and taking feedback. And, I mean, the story, I think, for us is, we always did this because it's, you know, it's a small community school system where there's just a lot of interaction with teachers generally. And so it's, it's to make sure that there's a full information flow. And I, you know, within that context, and as long as, you know, it's, we're coming in here, we're here to listen, you know, I personally don't have a problem with that. And I think, you know, I think for the reasons you state, there's, there's value in that.
I wouldn't ever want to be a barrier to unfiltered information. And I think, and that's the relationship I want to develop. And I'm afraid that if we don't do that from the very beginning, that there could be a misperception, that's all.
So I guess the one question I have is, is there a mechanism, so if you have staff who don't feel comfortable expressing themselves in these meetings, that they can either, I guess, not necessarily go to you, but is there some neutral third party that they could talk to offline, you know, I guess, other options available?
Sure, they, the staff also are represented by PEAK, the Professional Education Association, or SEEK, the Support Employees Association, or the Administrative Association. Employees are also welcome to contact you. Obviously, I'd prefer if they'd contact me, because I feel like I can help resolve their issue if they come to me, and you all aren't in really a resolution mode, because you're a board as opposed to an individual. But if they, if they do come to you, you can send them to me, and I'm happy to, happy to sort through whatever. But they can, they can certainly talk to their principals, they can talk to their representatives in their buildings. So, yeah, I think there are other mechanisms.
And that's communicated to them, made clear to them?
Sure.
Ms. Gill.
So building on Ms. Russell's point, I think my only concern with this, and I'm happy to do it your way, would be that staff feel like maybe they're, they can't, why is the superintendent here? This used to be our time to just kind of vent to you. And, you know, whether or not that was appropriate or not. Are we now being spied on? You know, like, are we not allowed to, are we not allowed to express our opinions freely? And not saying that you being there would not allow them to do that, but that that's a perception that some staff may have, that they're now not allowed to just freely talk to school board members about whatever. And I never really got too much unfiltered discussion anyway, so it wasn't a big airing of grievances, but.
So the only way, the only way to build trust is to show consistent behavior over time. And unless I have an opportunity to be in the room to show consistent behavior over time, I'll be really, I think, hard pressed to be able to establish that trust. And it's, believe me when I say, it's not about, it's not about control, it's not about filtering, it truly is about, we're a team. We're sort of all together in this, and how can we support and understand the needs of us as a community, when some people in the community are not part of the conversation? That's all, so.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea, it's just, you know, trying to make sure the staff understands like that, exactly what you're saying, like this is a trust-building thing.
And I'm certainly open to partway through, you know, saying, would you like me to step out? You know, I could, I could certainly do that, too, if that is helpful. But I, again, I'd rather just build trust. Thanks.
Mr. Castillo.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Just a couple of things. Historically, we usually did two passes per building, so you'd have two groups of two school board members. And that could be taxing on your time, and I'd want to be mindful of that. The other thing, on the theme of trust, I don't, I don't think it's objectionable that you're there. I guess I would suggest that you would clear that with your building principals as well, because they, I think, have a stake in that as well, because it's their building. So if they're, I'm happy to do it any way you want. I think as a matter of governance, you make some good points, so I'm happy to follow your lead on this.
I was going to say, in line with Mr. Castillo did, that I'd suggest if we're going to do it that way, that maybe it's one group of school board members per school, because I do think it's pretty intense. If you have to go to all those meetings, and we have two or three groups at each school, that's going to eat a significant amount of your time.
Fair enough.
And that's not necessarily a bad thing, because it's, you know, one opportunity for everybody to get together, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
For me, I'm open to try it, but I share Ms. Gill's concerns with just being that it's the change of what has been in the past, what staff kind of perception would be. But I get your point of the building trust and all that. So I am willing to, you know, give this particular slight change a try and see how it goes. But again, too, you know, there's, you know, you don't get a ton, but it is that opportunity, I think, sometimes, that the staff felt that we, you know, they probably don't get that opportunity with us that often. And it's their opportunity to share whatever it may be they want to share with us, in that I'm not worried about having the superintendent and/or my principal, my building principal in the room with me. Typically, I will say, typically, depending on where the conversations went, if I felt it was a big enough concern, I generally would have shared with the superintendent anyways. But I'm open to giving this particular format a try and see who goes to share it, and it's something that we would potentially, I think, revisit for the following years.
Just one, one final thing, Mr. Chairman. It's a small sample size, but I did have an opportunity to attend a SEEK meeting with Dr. Newman, and he was there for most of the time, but not all of the time. And I observed no filtering of direct comments to Dr. Newman. I think he presented himself in a very open, you know, here's what I'm saying, here's what I'm doing, here's what we're at, so that, you know, people felt comfortable in talking. So I.
That's fine. So I guess the next steps would be to work on a schedule of the buildings, and then for us to, once, I assume, the staff and Marty sends that out to us, and then we sign up for times and buildings that we would, the purpose for us to go, go in. So that'll be the next step, is to wait for that schedule to come around to all of us and sign up. All right. Thank you.
So just for the newbies? So that'll be two, because we go in two at a time, two school board members per school, there are five schools, so that'll be 10 slots. There are seven of us, so three will need to do two, and more people may want to do that, and then the rest of the people could do one, if that's the way it breaks down. So there'll be a signup sheet that'll come around, and just pick a, you know, you can pick a school, I think, but, you know, there'll be a similar amount of flexibility.
I think in the past, too, we included the central office.
Yeah, and it has been a central office meeting as well.
Yeah, sorry, yes, six, so.
All right, and then the next topic, City Council Budget Partners, Dr. Newman?
Right, thank you. One of the understandings that I have about the past, and sort of the way I used to work in the city of Fairfax as well, now it's harder to say Fairfax, I wanted to say Falls Church, so that's a good thing, right? Starting to transition, is that we would oftentimes connect our school board members with city council members to talk about the budget and engage them in the budget conversation. And I would like to set those partnerships up again. So if you have somebody in particular that you'd like to work with, if you'd just shoot me an email, I'll make some connections for you, and then send it to the chair, who can send it out to everybody, and just kind of say, here's who you're connected with. Is that okay?
The practice in the past has been, chair does chair, vice chair does vice chair, and then it'll be up there. So I'm happy to do it either way.
Well, that sounds good. We could carry on with that.
And we had double, new people, their first time, we'd have a veteran be with them as well, just to kind of help them get through the process. I don't know if that's necessary, but that's just a, something we've done in the past.
All right, well, I'll take that into consideration, too, and maybe we could team up. Okay. Ms. Castillo.
And we also need talking points of some kind, so.
You got it.
I might, again, just suggest that since we have mentor relationships, that the mentor, instead of just doing something different, goes along with the direct meeting, it's just as easier to do that way. Perfect.
And then final, final topic would be, let's talk about the West Falls Church Project Committee.
Right, and I'm going to, dang, are you still here? I'm going to try to get on Apple TV, can I project this? And as we're working on that, I wanted to let all of you know, in case you didn't, last week, the city council adopted a resolution establishing a campus coordinating committee for George Mason High School campus and the economic development project. They are currently, okay, it says Mirror CEO Conference Room?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's not coming up. Well, I'll just keep, they are currently calling the economic development project now the West Falls Church Project, just for purposes of marketing, which I think is a great idea. Perfect, dang, thanks. And here is the, here is the resolution that they, that they did adopt, and it talks about, in the first couple of wherés', you know, the relationship between the city council and the board, working together around the high school and the economic development project. Here they talk about finding it helpful to work together and collaboratively, and I think that we would all agree that that's certainly a positive. And then overall success of the project, that the high school design and the future economic development plan be closely coordinated. To that end, they ended up doing a number of things, including developing a campus coordinating committee. And this campus coordinating committee includes the superintendent, the city manager, and then the city council. We'll have two members that are appointed to it, one planning commissioner member, planning commission member, one EDA member. We would have then two school board members, and then potentially an FCCEA representative and a PTA representative. And let me show it to you in a different format, that just kind of gives you a visual for what it could look, what it is going to look like. If I can make it a little bit bigger here. Stand by. Oops, that's not going to do it. There we go, okay. So here's the visual, and so if you think about, sort of the left-hand side is the economic development plan team, and the right side is the school design team. And so we've got a project manager, and as I think everybody in here knows, we have rebid the contract for the project management of George Mason High School. We have been currently working with Arcadis, who has, is still the project manager on the Mount Daniel project, but looking at potentially changing that, the RFP is on the street, and we should have some more information in the next couple of weeks. And then there's a staff team, and that staff team includes myself, a purchasing officer, so that would be Jim Wise, likely, from the city. He's been very helpful through the RFP process. Our legal eagle over here, Ms. Minson. We would have someone from curriculum and instruction, likely Lisa Hi. We'd have principals, we'd have someone from the permitting department, public works department, and then John Brett, as well as Wyatt Shields. And that would be our school side. On the economic development side, it would be a team from the staff, and then I would be an ad hoc member on the, on the city side, to have conversations with the economic development. And then there's the campus coordinating committee. And the idea of the campus coordinating committee really is to serve as, in my estimation, and in Wyatt's, and I think now the city councils as well, as sort of a clearinghouse or an area to sort of help clear the decks and share concerns that are coming up, and help us navigate what some of those concerns might be. This body, this campus coordinating body, is not a decision-making body, but rather a consultative kind of service, who will help both project managers and the staff in many ways, sort of help us lead through our team, our teamwork. So some of the things that they talk about, that they would focus on, would be areas of interface. And as you know, in our RFP for the school site, we did ask that anyone who's involved in the project would also have on their member of a team, a commercial architecture, a commercial architect, that would be serving in a consultative role on the architectural side to make sure that there was a seamless integration. But that may be something that we would talk about. We would talk a lot about project schedules, to make sure that we're coordinating through the process appropriately and properly. Looking at shared infrastructure, for example, parking, looking at utilizing Virginia Tech, the University of Virginia space, are there things that that team can help us sort of navigate through, through relationships or through leverage that we have there. Financial planning and reporting, just kind of making sure that we're aware of what each other are doing with respect to costs and the like. And then anything we can do to help with public information. And we've already begun to crack that nut at public information. John Brett's been working very closely with Susan Finirelli on the city side to develop opportunities for our respective websites to cross-pollinate and the like. But the big idea here is that in this particular circumstance, where we have this campus coordinating committee, we will need two members of the school board to serve on that campus committee. We would anticipate that that committee would likely meet once a month. And as an outgrowth, just by the way, and I meant to mention this earlier, on the school design and construction side, you'll see on the right-hand side of this screenshot, there's also a place for task teams. This is a place where, you know, we may have teams of people that are talking about curriculum and instruction. We may have task teams that are talking about parking, we may have task teams that are talking about athletics. But those would be teams that would be then reporting to the project manager and myself, and then if there were issues, then we would potentially bring those issues to the campus coordinating committee. But again, it's a, it's sort of a conference, a cross-conference committee, that will keep each other in the loop on information, and ultimately sort of help, if there are issues on either side, navigate some of those waters that we may run up against. And things that I would anticipate might be permitting, or things that I might anticipate would be wastewater and storm management kinds of issues. That campus coordinating committee may be of help with us, to us with that, some of those issues as well. So tonight, I'm asking you to take a look at this. Take also, in your time between now and the next board meeting, take some time to take a look at the resolution that the city council has adopted, because at the next meeting, I'd like, I'd like your approval of this process, so that we can work together towards a resolution of the campus project up at George Mason High School.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Are there questions? Ms. Castillo.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. I would ask that you review that roles and coordination structure, maybe in conjunction with Ms. Minson, to make sure it aligns with statutory allocations of responsibility, because I think we're leaving a few items on the table here. Both on the economic development side, I think we need to play a role there, because most of this is going to be school property. Obviously, that most of the heavy lifting will be done on the general government side, but I think we deserve a hand on the steering wheel there. And then in addition, I think, again, the statutory allocation of responsibility for school buildings and land rests with us. And I think this document, at the very least, may set up expectations that are not aligned with that. And so I think we need to be quite clear. I'm sure it's great to get input, but I think people need to understand that it will be, it will be a consultative process, as opposed to, you know, some delegation of our responsibilities.
Thank you for raising that. That has been a rather significant conversation that I've continued to have with the city manager, and he is of the same mind as you are and as I am, about whose responsibility statutorily it is to build this high school and the property itself. And I think we both agree, and from what I understand, the conversation with the city council was, that it really was a consultative coordination, as opposed to any kind of authoritative, and that, you know, that ultimately, the decisions about the campus project reside with you as a. about the campus project reside with you as a board. And I think that that's been made very clear, at least to the city manager. But I will, but I will go back.
I, I hope it will permeate the, the bedrock as well, 'cause, 'cause as I read this, I, I don't see that reflected in that document.
And, and as, I'll also pass this on to Ms. Minson to take a look at, just to make sure. Other questions? Mr. Renninger?
A couple. I have some of the same concerns as Mr. Castillo. The, there are, I'm just really interested in making sure we have some parity, right? So the, the city council, by its inherent role, has some oversight in what we do, because they approve bond resolutions and all of that. And we don't issue debt or any of those sorts of things. The, while I agree that the, the city needs to take the lead on the economic development piece, you know, if the, the city could propose economically advantageous development that we, as a school board, would think was inappropriate to be next to a educational facility. And so there ought to be some means for us to have certainly influence, and maybe statutorily, we've actually got to say that's okay since it's school land. I don't, I don't know the answer to the question. I'd certainly defer to Ms. Minson on that. And I think we've gone out of our way, for example, when we're doing, under the committee for the down-select, for the initial conceptual phase of the RFP, we've asked a couple of city council members to sit on. I'd like to have that, I, I just would like a, you know, a peer, if you will, relationship in light of the different responsibilities that we've got. And I'm a, I, I, the, the one, the nagging thing for me was not on the deployment, not on what happens on the school side, but what happens on the economic development side. Because I just don't think that it's necessary that that could be, it's necessarily that that would flow out in a way that would give us an, an equal, not necessarily equal share, but allow us to fulfill our statutory responsibilities and work as a peer body with the city council. The other question I've got, well, one comment and then a question. The comment is, in terms of the two members, I think we solved that with liaison assignments, because that assigned Mr. Webb and Mr. Castillo to be the two representatives for the campus. It doesn't say Campus Coordinating Committee, but it says something similar, which is?
That was a?
GMHS MEH Project Working Group. I, I think that's maybe the role, but then the question I've got, and we may not be ready to talk about this yet, but I, like many other people, was interested in the announcement of plans for WADA and the, its work with Fairfax County. And it feels to me, at least, like that's, I don't know if it's harmful or not, but there is some interrelationships there in terms of what we're gonna be doing. And it would be good to have, maybe in a closed session, maybe not, a little bit better understanding of the effect of that.
It's a great question. Let me, let me see if I can perhaps engage the city manager to come speak to us about the effect of it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Renninger's point, I, I do think it's important, it's been misreported, that this was a Fairfax County step. This is WADA asking Fairfax County to change what the designation for that land is. And frankly, I don't know what's gonna happen, because from what I heard from Mr. Faust, that is residential and, and will always be so. So maybe that'll change, I don't know. But if, if, I, I agree that more context would, would be great, but, but I think WADA's maybe got an uphill battle here.
I, I think the interesting part of the conversation also is, not only what is, what is the effect? Is it positive? Is it negative? Is it neutral? What, what does that mean for us in our capacity to go out and, and seek economic development? And I'd, I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to engage the city manager to come talk to us. I know that that was a topic of conversation at a recent mayor's meeting that was held, and perhaps he can give us a little briefing about that.
Sorry, one other question. In terms of the other governance structures, so Michael Ankuma and I had been attending, along with you, the Economic Development Working Groups roughly on every other Friday. And in the document that was approved by the board last week, Mr. Anderson was stepping into Mr. Ankuma's shoes. Is that meeting going to continue? Is that gonna be subsumed in the coordinating committee? I just, it feels to me like that would be something that would continue, but I don't know.
Yeah. My understanding is that it's gonna continue, but I'll double-check that.
I mean, I would say double-check that, 'cause I thought I was told that it, it sunsets.
Okay.
But if you just find out, we can make it.
Yep, will do.
And then my question would be, the suggested additional members that was by the, by the, how would you recommend either staying with those additional two persons from PTA and Peak, or others? And then how would we go about choosing who that, those representatives would be?
I, I would, first of all, I'd likely change the Peak representative to be an FCC EA representative as opposed to Peak. And then I would leave it to the discretion of the president of FCC EA to make a recommendation about who they think would be a good fit for this committee. And I would work with the, the president with respect to the PTA. We have a really good working group of PTA presidents, and I, again, would sort of ask for their input about who they felt like would be a good representative, and take their, take their lead on that, and then recommend a person from their ranks that way.
And that's, that's good to me. Yeah, and if you just, with the whole governance layout of it, Mr. Castillo and Mr. Renninger, I would have some pretty decent concerns about that part of it, making sure that we are part of the, particularly the economic development side of it. I think having at least a voice at the table when it comes to what they're looking at potentially, working towards being a part of that, that ten acre development, whether it's something that kind of falls in line with being right next door to a school. I think we should have at least a seat at the table and to express concerns about those as they, they move forward with that particular project. But I think the others, I would definitely, with the questions that I've heard in the community, I think it would be good for us to get a briefing from the city manager of what the WADA story actually means for the overall project, for us and the impact. But yeah, those were my questions. Anyone else?
Before we adjourn, we do have some answers to some budget questions that were asked, and we'd like to share those with you tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kristin to take on the budget question. Let me get on to this.
While they're pulling up the document, in addition to the budget question answers that we wanted to go through tonight, we also have some additional handouts for your budget binders. So the first are two color-coded pages. One is budgeted expenditures by type, and the other is by school. I believe in the binders, last time, people received either two copies of by type or two copies of by school. So here's one of each of those in the packet for you.
But it's the same document?
Same document. It's just, so now you have one of each. The other items for your binders, while we're waiting for this document to come up as well, is an updated list of the unfunded budget requests. And then the last item that I particularly want to draw your attention to is the budget calendar. So some of these dates have changed since before. So in addition to adding the date in terms of the town hall or the city council meeting, I want you to make particular note that some of the dates have changed. So this is the latest copy. And then moving forward, as we go through this process, as we give you updated documents, we'll add revision dates at the bottom to help you know when the items were last updated. Okay, any questions on that, before we head into the budget questions and answers? Okay. So as we work through this budget process and we get questions and answers, one of the things that we really wanted to do was not only to provide great information to the school board, but also to increase transparency in terms of the community. So what I'm proposing is that when we answer budget questions, they're submitted by school board members, that we keep track of them and we publish them for the community as well. So this is a draft document that we created today, that goes through and really takes that approach. So it always starts off with a table of contents that we would continually update. And then you'll see, for each question that we get, which here we are at question one, we'll try to indicate the general topic at the top. So it says question one, this one is related to planning factors. Then we'll have the date, who submitted the question, what the specific question is, and then the answer. So as we go through the process, we'll continually update these. So if we could just take a few minutes tonight and just quickly walk through these answers, we thought it would be helpful. And then if you have any follow-up questions related to these or would like additional information, we're certainly happy to do that as well. So question one is really about planning factors and the underlying basis for those factors. And the answer is provided here. When the planning factors were developed, they really looked at what were the pre-existing planning factors, what was done prior to FY18, what were the current staffing environments at FCCPS, looking at regional comparisons, and then also really looking at what does the state require? So what is the Virginia Department of Education's standard of quality and standard of accreditation, and what are those as well? So when looking at the planning factors, all of the planning factors do exceed the requirements from both what's called the SOQ, that's the standards of quality, and the SOA, the standards of accreditation, with that notable exception of the psychologists. So you'll see that in the FY19 budget proposal, there was that additional psychologist proposed. It's our intention, as we move forward, to analyze those planning factors annually to make sure that we're maintaining compliance with VDOE, and also meeting all of the needs of the community for FCCPS. And we would also like, as we move forward, to continue to develop planning factor information, to provide that comparison of what does the state require on the planning factors. So it's always available as a handy reference, a thought as we move forward. Moving along to question two, which is, again, related to planning factors. How do the current staffing levels compare to the planning factors in place, and where do we have any significant deviations from that? So current staffing levels are in alignment with the planning factors, with the exception of a half of a counselor position and the math specialist at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. So again, both of those items were included in the superintendent's budget proposal for 2019. And then when we look, Mount Daniel, Mary Ellen Henderson, and George Mason do exceed their planning factors for their classroom teachers slightly. But as was also indicated in the superintendent's budget proposal, no teacher positions were eliminated for FY19. So if we move to question three, line item budget availability. Mr. Anderson requested that we make the line item budget available in a spreadsheet format for the community. So we will get that posted by the end of the week. So that's question three. Question four, how is each of the new budget requests funded in FY19, specifically tied to the triennial plan? So what you'll see in this answer is, we took the document that you currently have in your binder, the new budget request funded in FY19. And for every one of those requests, underneath, we've added the alignment to the triennial plan. Right in addition, right above this is the link to the triennial plan, so anyone who wants additional information about the triennial plan can easily get there. So we hope that really clarifies that relationship between each of those new requests and the triennial plan. So there's multiple pages to that, question number four. So moving along to question number five, how each request improves student outcomes, and how will we quantify and measure that impact? So we're now, have moved on to page 11. Thank you. So we look at the requests that are specifically tied to student performance, for example, the math specialists, the PYP coordinators. SMART goals are gonna be developed and implemented, and will be reviewed by the principal or the director of the department who receives the funding. Then we look at the requests in the budget proposal that are operational in nature.
Just for a second.
Of course.
Everybody know what the acronym SMART is? So I don't need to go, okay, yep.
Perfect.
For the community, maybe? Strategic Measurable Attainable Time Bound, or?
Realistic?
No. Strategic Measurable Attainable Results Oriented and Time Bound, so.
Thank you. So when we look at the operational items that will be measured in terms of workload ratios, planning factors, or schedules, the operational standards that will be used to monitor those for appropriate levels, and they'll also be adjusted then for the unique goals of FCCPS. So when we look at our operational effectiveness, department managers are being asked to evaluate their current systems for both efficiencies and improvements. And transportation and food services will be the first departments that are gonna analyze those operations. So you'll see more on that in the coming months. So moving to question six. Question six had to do with the inconsistencies between the budget books and the slides posted in line in a few places. So the online slides have been, have been corrected. And the presentations online also reflect the most recent information, and you have additional copies in your packets tonight. So again, as we move forward with this process, when we make revisions, we'll date them, so you'll know it always is the most recent copy. And then the last question that we had received prior tonight is question number seven, and it has to do with the savings realized, and are those updated numbers in the proposed budget, the updates from the December planning meeting? And yes, Mr. Anderson, you are absolutely correct. Then in the proposed budget from the superintendent, all of those benefit cost numbers were updated with the most recent information available regarding those rates. So for example, VRS is the rate that was included in the governor's proposed budget in December. The city retirement rate was also updated after that December meeting. And then lastly, the health insurance quotes were received for both the local choice program and Kaiser. So all of that is the most recent information. So thank you for letting me walk through this tonight. I really have to give Michelle Kopeck credit. She's the one who pulled this all together today. So thank you so much, Michelle, for doing all this work. Are there any questions?
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Renninger.
Just a, a, a quick request, which is, I, I think you said this, but I wanna make sure, that essentially, the online budget book will always mirror the paper budget book.
Yes.
And when it doesn't, we'll give you replacement pages, so that it does.
All I care about is the online budget book, because paper is, I can't find it ever. So I'll do all the online stuff, so.
Yes, online has benefits, including searchability. PDFs have really wonderful functions. And there too, when we update any online versions, we'll make sure that we put a revision date. So if something has changed, you'll always know if it was updated.
Does this seem like a reasonable way to go through the questions and have them posted? So that you, okay, great.
Thank you.
And then one question that I have for the meeting that, on the 27th, if we could send around for everyone just who potentially can attend, I know there's 50/50 whether I will be the?
The 28th?
The 28th, I'm sorry, it's 28th, the Sunday.
Oh, the town meeting.
The town meeting, to see, make sure that we have school board representation there. I know it's 50/50 whether I will get back in town, and if I'm gonna be flying back up from a work trip in Atlanta, and I'm not sure what time I will be landing, and time to get to that particular meeting. I know we tried to start doing that back in the, in the fall.
So we'll get Marty to send out a, just an RSVP, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions before we adjourn? And last thing, I'm gonna hopefully make an effort to, to get our new Secretary of Education to get into Falls Church to visit our schools, being that he's a person coming from within the classroom ranks, which is quite interesting and different, to have someone that actually teacher, and an immediate teacher going into that role. When I was down in Richmond over the weekend, I, we kind of talked briefly in passing, and I kinda dropped that police bug in his ear, and I wanted to, so hopefully he'll follow up with that, and maybe we'll get him to, to come up and tour, tour our schools, and he'll get something for us to do. So if there are no other questions, we stand adjourned for tonight.